And I am going to bring the Tuesday, July 14th, 2020, meeting of the Larkspur Planning Commission to order. And we'll start with a roll call.
Okay, on my screen from my kind of who's closest, I'm going to just circle around the screen here. Start with Commissioner Wagstaff. I'm here. Commissioner Cusler.
Present.
Our new Commissioner Natasha Chalmers.
I'm here.
And Commissioner Jeffrey Swisher.
Hi.
And Chair Laura Talber.
Here.
Everybody is present and accounted for this evening.
Okay, are we open now for members in public?
Yeah, so go ahead and announce it. Erin, is there anybody attending that might want to raise their hand?
No other participants other than us.
Yeah, we do have attendees here. We have about six attendees on the line that can.
Okay, then I will ask if anyone would like to speak on anything that is not on today's agenda. Would you please raise your hand? I see fourteen participants. But I can't, I can't actually see them all.
You can't see it. So there are no hands raised at this time.
Okay, now I see attendees. Okay, got it. All right.
Okay, and we can go back and visit that again before we get into business, just in case.
Yeah, okay, now I'm seeing I could, I don't normally, I'm not used to seeing two different versions of participants, but now I see there's attendees. Okay.
Oh, yeah, this is our first time on Zoom.
Yes, it is our first time on Zoom. So all of you bear with me. Okay, I think next up is the planning director's report.
Okay, well, just a couple of quick items. We're been in the process of preparing to potentially open to the public to a very limited capacity kind of based on appointments and potentially a sort of controlled queuing system. That is something we're still preparing for at this time. And the recent governor's orders and the recent Marin County orders have shed a little bit of uncertainty as to whether we're moving forward with that sooner than later. Although from the operational perspective currently, there would be some advantages to particularly being able to bring people into the building on a very controlled appointment basis. We're facing a lot of challenges having to communicate and with materials and submittals through email and deliveries. Ninety percent of the projects, it generally works fine, but there are always those that are a bit more complicated and require a lot of back and forth to get materials correct. Sometimes it's just easier to get in the same room with somebody. But that said, we're working on that and kind of proceeding cautiously with how we're moving forward. With that, I would like to welcome, we do have two new members to the planning commission. Natasha Chalmers, who lives in the Riviera Circle neighborhood. And she's been a resident, she's a fairly new resident of Larkspur, but five years in and is very excited to join the commission. And Dr. Jeffrey Swisher, who is a longtime resident, lives up on Wiltshire Boulevard. And I've had a little experience working on a project or two many years ago on Jeffrey's property. And fortunately, that all went well. So I think we have good sentiment there. So with that, I might ask if anybody, if you have, beginning with Natasha, if you have anything you'd like to share with the commission, given that we're having to kind of work as a team through this teleconferencing platform.
Just to say thank you for allowing me to join the commission. I look forward to working with all of you. It's a shame that we can't meet in person. That, I know we can't have these meetings in person, but hopefully that will happen soon. And I look forward to the next four years.
Like to echo the same. I'm very happy to be joining. We've been like, as Neil says, we've been long term residents at Larkspur for about 27 years. Owned three different houses in Larkspur. And I've had fantastic interactions with City Hall and the planning department. And it's been just great. So I'm very happy and proud to be part of it.
Okay, well, that's all for the director's report for now. Before we go into public hearing, you might just want to double check if anybody, if there's any public comments again.
I was going to ask that. So is there, is there anyone who came a little late or otherwise? Who would like to speak on anything that is not on today's agenda? And if you do, could you raise your hand, your virtual hand? I am not seeing any. So I, we will continue on to the public hearing items. Okay, the first thing is the amendment to the precise development plan and ordinance numbers 972 and 1004 regulating Rose Garden subdivision. And its text 202012. Could we have the staff report, please?
Good evening, Chair Talber and Commissioners.
Just introduce for, sorry, sorry, Lorraine. For your, the commission and the new members presenting tonight on this item is Lorraine Weiss. She's a consulting planner that has worked with the city for many years, providing extra support at times of overflow and special projects. So I'm going to hand this off to Lorraine.
Good evening, Chair Talber and Commissioners. This is a technical lot modification to allow the property owner to slightly shift the fence line consistent with the east property line and gain approximately 604 square feet of usable yard space. Specifically, the applicant requests approval to amend the language of sections 14I and 15 of the development standards of the precise development plan to adjust the 50-foot creek and buffer setback, the eastern edge, only for 65 Rose Lane. Just briefly, the lot is on the southeast corner of Rose Lane with a 3,736 square foot residence. 65 Rose Lane is uniquely affected by these creek setbacks as the lot is situated at the corner of the development where the creek channel turns abruptly from an east-west orientation to a north-south orientation. An error was made in plotting the fence line. The home design was not integrated to the unique characteristics of the site, specifically the fence line and yard constraints. The footprint and the architectural elements of the home were plotted on the site without consideration of the awkward angle of the future fence line and severely restricts access to the side yard and use of the backyard. The amended text is provided in attachment two. These amendments would enable a common sense correction to a flaw in the original layout. A sequent addendum has been provided in attachment three. Despite the success of the planting in the upland habitat buffer area, this area in question remains fairly barren, and there is no notable habit loss. Staff recommends approval of the proposed text amendments, and the planning commission should hold a public hearing, discuss the amendments, and all the comments will be advisory to the city council. That concludes my staff report.
Hey, Erin, before we go on, how do I get everybody's picture on when the, when you're showing the document?
Although, when I'm presenting, all the screens should have became a separate window. It may just be minimized, or it may be behind one of your other windows.
You may have to, if I can, you may have to scroll. I know in my, in my configuration, it doesn't show all the screens.
I see.
You can scroll down to get others.
Yeah, okay.
You can also change the views. So you can change it from show small active speaker or grid video at the top of that window.
It's getting tinier and tinier. Okay.
Yeah.
I see where you scroll. I just don't, I have six people up and that's, that's it.
Yeah, I only have five.
There's going to be a blue arrow. If you click on the blue arrow, it will.
Yeah, yeah, I can, I can get everybody. I just wanted to see where Lorraine was because I could hear her voice. But now I can see her. So I'm good.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
One question I had is, I'm assuming that was a PUD, the whole thing. And so the house FARs, the lots, the lot actually doesn't change. It's just the setback from the creek, right?
That is correct.
Is what they're asking for, so.
In essence, the lot will look bigger. The lot is the same size. It's not changing its size. It's really the setback that, that cuts through the lot. And so as an effect of changing this fence, it will in fact appear a bit larger. And they'll have more usable space in doing so.
And in effect, what they did was they treated it as a, as a corner situation, which is why that cuts across that way. Is that right?
Yeah, the, the top of bank was mapped out, as I understand, sometime around 1999 or soon thereafter, as they were preparing, beginning to prepare for the development and vetting the potential environmental issues and need for some setbacks, to impose some setbacks from the creek.
Yeah.
And so, and basically by plotting certain points, that established top of bank, and then 50 feet back from that became the setback.
Right.
Established. And it was 50 feet from the north-south reach and 25 feet along the east-west reach.
Right.
And anytime you have a convergence of two different setbacks, there's always a little bit of an awkward connection, particularly if it's not at a right angle.
Hi, Lorraine, just a small clarification. On the, along the creek that runs east, east-west, west-east with the 20, that has a 25-foot allowable setback, the, the actual impervious setback is 50 feet. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, all right. That, okay, thanks.
So. Yeah, there's kind of two setbacks overlay, overlaying each other. And that's a good observation.
Right, and then, and then that, and the corresponding setbacks then along the, the north-south segment of the creek is 50 feet compared to the 25 on the east-west segment. And then, and what is, just for my identification, what is the setback between that section of the creek and where one can put in impervious material? Is that also 50 feet or is that?
I think it's, I think what you're referring to is also 50, yeah, it's a 50-foot impervious and building, pervious surface and building setback along the east-west reach as well. So that's where the setbacks don't, they, they're different.
Yeah.
That's why you have fences that go up to 25-foot setback, but you have an impervious setback within those rear yard spaces.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, I had a question. This is Natasha. So the, I was curious to know why on the fencing, because I know in the application, they referred to changing the mesh fence to a wooden fence. Why it's all mesh fence along the backside of the property? I think that's the 50-foot setback line. Whereas along the side of the, the side of the property, I think it's a 25-foot setback from the creek. That is wood fence. Was there any reason why that was wood originally? And why the, the other side was only mesh?
The, Neil, do you want me to answer? So on the creek side, the 50-foot setback on the creek side, east of the subject site, the fence line originally was mesh. They want it to be wood. The wood actually helps for privacy and also so that there wouldn't be any intrusion of people walking along the area, kind of looking into that space, which would be the private property owner's space.
Yeah, but I think the question was why, why was there an open mesh along part of that side in the rear? Is that correct?
Yeah, because exactly, because right now, along the back of all those properties, I'm getting my northwest and east, east and east-west, north-south, east-west a little bit backwards here. But yeah, that's a better plan. So along the Larkspur Creek at the back of the property, that's all a mesh fence. And then it continues to mesh along the edge as it turns the corner. And then it goes into wood fence.
Yeah.
And I totally understand, sorry, I totally understand why he wants to switch it all to wood because of, because of privacy. But I wondered if there was a reason why it was all originally mesh in the first place.
Yeah, I think the, and it's hard for me to say exactly why or kind of get back to, there were so many moving parts with this project. But, and a lot of phasing that went into this various decisions at different points in time. But I think the basic principle was from the outset, there was a lot of sensitivity to the creek and the natural environment along the creek, and there was a desire to kind of maintain an openness. And I think the building an impervious setback that actually intrudes into those yards, I use the word intrudes because the way it's built, it's somewhat intrusive. But that was the way it was initially planned out with then the houses kind of being built up to that setback. But in those yard spaces, it seemed that the concept was these would be maintained as largely vegetated, natural, more natural condition. So I think it was a, an intent to maintain kind of an openness and not create a blocked wall along that area. Also, keeping in mind that there was, there's a lot of buffer. There's, there were planting of bushes, there's trees and things. So with the, with the natural buffer that exists, I guess there was a sense that the privacy would not be a significant concern. And we haven't really heard that it is from any of the property owners there. At this point, we haven't had any complaints about the wire mesh fence. So I think that was the basic principle. I'm not sure if any of our other commissioners were involved in many of that decision making back in the, maybe late 90s or mid 2000s. But I think that was the basic idea. And I would note that the, the subdivision, there's a lot of detail mapped out in the precise plan and the actual location of solid wood versus mesh versus six-foot high versus shorter fences is all pretty detailed out in the plan that was adopted.
Any other questions first up? Okay, is the applicant here? We know?
Yes, let's see.
Okay, I see his hand up, I think. So.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, yeah, this is, this is Matt Howard.
Hi, would you like to just present your, what you've done here for what you're asking for?
Oh, yeah, sure, of course. So I'm here with my wife, Megan. There's quite a bit of history and quite a bit of detail to this. But in a nutshell, I think Lorraine did a pretty good job of representing what, what we'd like to do. The, we feel like the fence kind of arbitrarily cuts across the corner of the property and really has kind of three impacts to us as a family and our use of the, use of the property. One is obviously, you know, it limits the amount of space we have in the yard. They're not huge yards to begin with. And, you know, getting a little extra space in the yard would certainly be helpful, especially in these times of, you know, COVID, where we do more socializing outside and, you know, the kids want to go play out there and stuff like that. The second is actually having more space will make it easier for us to, to create the type of screening, you know, vegetative screening within our fence that, you know, will give us more privacy, the type of vegetative screening that Neil was referring to earlier. And then, as you can see, as you were flashing through the pictures there, the, the space around the corner of the house is really constricted. So actually, passage around the house within our, within the fence is really difficult from a maintenance perspective. You can see, not only is it, it's less than three feet between the corner of the house and the fence, but then there's a air conditioning unit right there. Makes it hard to get a wheelbarrow around or any kind of, you know, any kind of a maintenance equipment. So that's, that's definitely an annoyance also. So in effect, what we'd like to do is move, move the fence, you know, reasonably within the property to, along that east stretch there, north-south stretch, the eastern side of the property, to put the fence along the property line and basically extend the, extend, as you can see in the diagram there, from, you know, kind of that D, point D to point C stretch, extend that out to the property line. And the next, the next diagram actually shows it the best if you can scroll. Yeah. So that triangle there basically represents the, the, the area of the yard that we'd like to recapture and the additional space we'd get around the corner of the house for, for passage by moving from, moving the fence from point C to point C prime or, you know, and, and from point B to point B prime. So the light gray line there is the existing fence line and the dark, the, the dark black dashed line is the, the proposed fence line. Does that make sense?
Seems, seems, seems like a good idea.
Yeah, we've talked to, I mean, I will say we've talked to a lot of people within the community, including, you know, some of the environmentalist, environmental voices, you know, Sandy Goldman from the Friends of the Cordera Creek and other folks related to the Audubon Society and our neighbors, city council members. And uniformly, you know, people look at what we're asking to do and think it makes sense. I haven't heard any objections. So hopefully, you know, it's not a controversial change. I feel like it's just, it was a, you know, an unfortunate artifact of many years of layered design decisions that ended up the way it is. And it's a relatively harmless change. Will have, I think, definitely no negative impact to the environment or the community, and if anything, could have positive impact based on the fact that we'll be able to improve the screening between, you know, kind of the, the bike path on the other side of the creek and our, and our yard. So hopefully, it's a net positive, you know, development for the community and definitely for my family.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public, the attendees, who would like to speak on this issue? Will you please raise your virtual hand?
Also, Chair Talber, just as a reminder for the record, we did receive a letter from Mr. Bill Howard, Matt's father, kind of getting into some of the background and the history of the situation and his support for this. So that was given to you guys as late mail late this afternoon. So just wanted to share that in the record.
So I'm not seeing any other hands. So what I will do, seeing none, close the public hearing portion of this and bring it back to the commission for thoughts and comments. So why don't I start with Brock?
I go by there almost every morning on my way to Rully. So I, I see really no downside other than whatever it would take for presumably the city council to make that change to the master plan. But I, I'm totally in support of what they're proposing.
Daniel?
Yeah, thanks, Laura. Yeah, so I, I agree. I'm totally in support of, of this and giving the, the advice to the city council in this regard. I just wanted to just amplify as one thing. Lorraine, in her report, this is, you know, quite valuable on page seven, does discuss the, essentially, origin of the issue that, that Mr. Howard wants to correct. The fact that this occurred is a design flaw in the layout of the development. I think that's, that's pretty much, it's a critical element. There's a, a critical element in as much as what we'd like to, what we try to avoid doing is creating some kind of circumstance that could later be interpreted as a grant of special privilege. And, and it's, it's, well, I don't think it is in any event. And that view is that we amplify to the fact that this whole issue derives from a design flaw on the part of the developer in the first place. So I'm supportive.
Great. Jeffrey?
I think it's a great idea. I mean, it's certainly no harm. And I think it's, the benefit is also from a safety standpoint, it allows fire department individuals, if there was a fire, to get around the corner of the house. I think it currently represents a danger as it's currently designed. And I think this will ameliorate that and mitigate the use issues that we're seeking. So I am fully in support.
Okay, perfect. Natasha?
Yes, I agree with everyone else. It seems to make a lot of sense. And visually, it makes more sense if you look at it from the outside. So as long as there's no issue with that mesh going away and it's going to a wooden fence, then yes, I'm in agreement with the application.
Thank you. And I also agree. I think it makes a lot of sense for the applicant and is really not a takeaway from anybody else. And I don't think it's a grant of special privilege. So I can support this as well. And so that means we're ready for a motion if somebody would like to make one.
I make a motion to support the proposal as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? I think not. So that was unanimous. And this will go to the city council, right? With recommendation from the planning commission?
Yes, we'll be bringing this to the city council on their August 5th meeting. We'll be sending out just another public notice. This is, unfortunately, a lot of machinations in language and ordinances in order to correct as what we described as a perceived flaw in the project. And part of that is amending the ordinance. That's the council's authority. So it'll go to them and on the 5th and do a second reading. So that will be our next step.
So our second public hearing item is a design review for 20 Via La Brisa. And this is something that we saw the last meeting and is back to us. So.
Can I just interject here, Laura, Chair Laura? So I actually live on Villa La Brisa. So I will need to recuse myself from this discussion. So I think you can take me off, out of the meeting for now.
Yeah, so what we'll do is
See you for the next one.
Okay.
We'll, we'll close down Natasha for this hearing and, and then keep in mind, Aaron Matthews, our assistant planner, is presenting this project. He's also kind of managing the hearings. So be patient if he's got to move things around on screen or get people onto the hearing. He's kind of juggling two tasks right now.
Right.
And he does it very well.
Thanks, Neil.
Okay, so Aaron, you're up.
All right. Commissioners and the public. So the 28 Villa La Brisa, as Chair Tauber mentioned, was continued in the, in the last meeting. But just to refresh everyone, the applicant is proposing to demolish an existing 100 square foot second floor solarium on the westerly side of the residence and construct a new conventional second story addition of 190 square feet. The site description, the subject property is 7,826 square, square feet with a 3% average slope. The lot is located on the south side of Villa La Brisa near the intersection of Riviera Circle in the Larkspur Marina neighborhood. The property is developed with a 2,792 square foot three-bedroom residence and two and a half bathrooms. The residence currently provides two parking spaces in the garage and two guest spaces in the driveway. The existing floor area ratio is 36%, where 40% FAR is permitted in the Arwin district. As I mentioned, the applicants are proposing to demolish the existing 100 square foot solarium and adjacent roof deck on the westerly end of the second floor to construct a new 190 square foot second floor addition. The addition is within the existing building footprint and will meet or exceed all required setbacks for the lot. The existing solarium height at the most westerly face is 19 feet. The proposed, the proposed addition would match the height of the existing home at 25 feet six inches where 30 feet is permitted by code. Additionally, other minor improvements include remodeling the interior second floor. As proposed, the project will increase the floor area of the property from 2,792 square feet to 2,882 square feet and modestly increases the floor area ratio from 0.36 to 0.37. The existing lot coverage will be unchanged at 1,844 square feet or 24%, where 40% is the maximum permitted by code. Just to recap again on the June 9th discussion, the commission reviewed application DR 2013 after hearing from staff and an interested member of the public. The commission closed the public hearing and provided the following comments to the applicant. Well, the applicants were actually absent, but they provided the comments during the meeting. The commission questioned the amount of unpermitted work that had already occurred. The architect and property owner were absent, as I mentioned, from the hearing, so they could not respond during the meeting. Several commissioners expressed concerns regarding the visual impacts from 657 Riviera Circle due to the addition and roof line being extended. It was noted by several commissioners that the setbacks between 28B La Brisa and 657 Riviera Circle were sufficient to ensure there would be no unreasonable or significant impacts on light views or privacy, and the proposed project could, could be supported from a design review perspective. It was noted by several commissioners that the existing solarium is lower in elevation, smaller in size, and relatively see-through, and the proposed new addition extension of the ridge line would create more visible massing and bulk. It was suggested the architect could explore design alternatives that would break up the bulk and massing caused by the proposed extension of the roof line. And that's, that's it for the presentation.
Aaron?
Yes.
You know, have, has any further work been pursued on this property since our last meeting?
No, just as a reminder, there was a stop work order placed on the property and we have not received any other noise or construction complaints since that time.
Okay, thanks.
Does anyone have any other questions for Aaron? Okay, I see the applicant is on.
Yes.
Yeah. Lisa, would you like to present your project?
Either Lisa or Eric is the architect. He's also on the line. Eric, yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent. I'm on a new device, so I was a little, had some trepidation that I wouldn't pull off my Zoom skills. But first off, I'd like to thank you all for hearing this a second time. Both Lisa and I were apparently indisposed. I was out of town on that date and didn't realize that it had come up so quickly. And I wanted to thank Aaron for, you know, shepherding through the, the staff report and, and doing the, the effort to get all that completed and, and, you know, accepted as a complete application. So thank you, Aaron, for that. So again, thank you, Steph, and, and council members for, for hearing this a second time. And this, just a little background, my experience with the project, the, the new owner of this property, Lisa, purchased it, I guess, a couple of, a couple of years ago, maybe. And the, I had walked through with her early on and, and got a sense of the solariums that were on the, I guess, the west side of the building that, and I observed that they were kind of non-conventional construction. They were approved as official living space, but they essentially were two decks and then sort of aluminum and glass solariums built on top of the decks in a very unique way. And so Lisa pursued the repair and or replacement of the lower level solarium. And I, I provided the working drawings for that. And that did not apparently require designer view or discretionary review. And that was sort of phase one. And I believe she got all signed off on that and the building permit was closed. I could be wrong on that, but I'm assuming it, it closed out. Then she asked me to design the replacement of the upper level solarium. And the design we came up with was, I felt that the best way to sort of tie the building back together to conventional framing and construction and siding and windows and roofing and gutters and just sort of make it look and feel and actually be built like the rest of the structure was to extend the existing ridge line. It's fairly far below the maximum height limit. And so that was the goal, was to just sort of bring the building back to more conventional construction. And, and, and she's done a phenomenal job with new painting and, and some windows and really bringing the building back to life from a street view perspective. Also, you'll note that the, the screening, the existing vegetation is pretty, pretty comprehensive from a side yard screening and from a street view. And there's another, some vegetation around the back. So this, this addition is fairly heavily screened, although it's well set back from the home at 16 Villa La Brisa. It's a, you know, it's a, well, it's much more setback than the required. So none of the setbacks were sort of a concern, I think. So the concerns for visual massing, privacy, light and air views, none of those seem to be a significant concern to any neighboring properties, although that there may, you know, have been some concerns expressed from, from neighbors at the last hearing. I didn't hear it. I didn't see anything in the minutes, but Lisa has made better efforts in, in informing the neighbors and garnering letters of support. So currently on the record, I believe Aaron should have a letter of support from 33, which is directly across, a little bit to the south, also from 38, which is to the south. And I spoke to Lisa prior to the hearing tonight, and she mentioned that she has a verbal and a text that, that shows that 657, which is directly out the back, has been, their concerns may have been alleviated with, with their discussion. So Lisa may be able to elaborate on that. And then the folks in 16, Lisa had mentioned that there's been conversations and that there's verbal support from them. However, I don't want to put any, any, any words in anybody's mouth. So I, if they're available to comment, I would love to hear what they have to say. I just was listening to what Lisa said about neighboring support, and it looks like it's improving, if not perhaps resolved. So in general, the, the design, my goal was to, you know, continue in the construction and the siding and the look and feel of the existing structure. So it all looks to be one consistent home that was built at the same time. And I think we've accomplished that. Like I said, it's, it's not exacerbating any significant setbacks or height or coverage or FAR. So we're in hopes that, that the design is, is acceptable and not, not in too much need of, of variation. I'll, I'll have, I'll let Lisa address any sort of procedural or timing discussions from her. I, I was not involved with that, and so I'll let her address that. So I'm really focusing on the design merits and hopefully the, this, the commission finds it acceptable. And if not, we'll, we'll do what needs to be done. So at that, I'll take any questions if there are any.
Would anybody else like to speak on this from the public?
I think, I think Lisa, the owner, may want to speak. So allow her to talk now. Lisa, you'll.
Hi, everyone. I wanted to reiterate what Eric said. Thank you so much for hearing this a second time. I apologize that I missed the first one. So yeah, there was a aluminum siding underneath the solarium, and I got a permit for that. And then the aluminum top, you know, made the house, well, in my opinion, it wasn't very attractive, this aluminum structure, and it didn't go with the rest of the house in terms of how it looked. And in addition, from a energy perspective, it made the house extremely, extremely hot. There were no coverings. And so we were having to use the air conditioning, which I prefer never to use if possible. Yeah, so that's that. And I've gotten verbal support from Cindy and Eric, who are on the, if you're looking at the house to the left of it, they're very nice. Yeah. And then along the property line, they are very, very tall. I'm sorry, to Cindy and Eric, Cindy and Eric, neighbors, along this property line on the left, yeah, right there, Eric, they're very, very, very tall. I don't know what you call them, cypress trees, or like, they look like evergreens, but they're very, very tall. And they go up through almost to the roof, no, not to the roof, but to the edge, the top of the windows for the second story. So there's a lot of privacy with that. And, yeah, so, and I think, you know, the house was like a muted green when I moved in and I painted it white and really tried to, you know, up the appearance of the, you know, update, update the appearance of the house to the neighborhood. As Eric mentioned, if you're looking at this drawing, to the north of where the proposed, you know, thing is, structure is, there is a huge, huge, huge tree. So you actually can't even see, no one was able to see even the story poles from the street, as my neighbors mentioned. Yeah, sort of, thank you, Eric, to the right of the chimney, if you will, if you look up there. And right above that, oh, yeah, I guess that is, yeah, sorry, Adam. I mean, Eric, that is the tree that I'm referring. And if you look to this picture just above that, you can also see that. Oh, yeah, Eric, bottom right-hand corner, if you show, if you go down there, you can see the big tree I'm talking about on the left. And then on the right, those were those, I probably am using the wrong word for the tree, but those cypress type trees. So both of those go way over the ridge line. If you're standing on the street looking at it, there's really zero impact from the street. Yeah. And my neighbors behind at 657 Riviera, Bob and Anna, had expressed concern that there was a black tarp felt over the solarium. And that's been up for a while. And I admit that it's been up probably way too long. And that was just to keep some of the heat out or attempt to keep some of the heat out. And also, when I did the construction, to keep sort of the construction debris inside and from falling out of the area. Let's see, what else can I say? And then, yes, Eric's already gone over the neighbor's support. I've had lots and lots of positive discussions and, you know, interactions with all the neighbors. And except for the 657, and I think we've cleared everything up with Bob and Anna. I had, do you have a text from them? And I have verbal, and they said, you know, absolutely, it's fine, as long, it was just a procedural at the last meeting, and, you know, they don't want, you know, they're fine with it now. And I can forward that text on if anyone would like to see that. I'm not sure how we do that via Zoom, but I could certainly do that at some point if needed. And I apologize, but I want to address the timing of this, if that is appropriate here, or we can just talk about the structure itself first. It's up to you guys. I mean, I don't know what, but I've never done this before, so I don't know how this works.
At the last meeting, there were a lot of questions that were raised. And since you were there, we couldn't answer about the permits and the work that was done without permit or, you know, beyond what the permit allowed you to do. So maybe we can address that.
Right. I wasn't sure if you wanted me to address that now, or if there was any questions on the design itself. But I'll go ahead and talk about the permits. It sounds like that's a good time for that. So when I put up, so I did, I sort of did this in reverse order, as I'm now learning. The downstairs solarium, that was also aluminum and white and not fitting with the house at all. I have a permit for that, and I did that solarium and made it, I think, more attractive. I put the French doors there and two really double, double paint windows, marked windows. I don't know if you guys, there's a picture of that. Yeah. So actually, that's the side facing the yard. Oh, yeah, that's got quite the view. But anyway, the, yeah, the French door on the left is the new view, is the new thing where the solarium was. And so when I was doing the story polls for this, I extended the ridge beam in the roof in an attempt to keep the downstairs dry, since I obviously did it in the wrong order. And I, and, you know, it got, I got carried away and end up building the roof. And I apologize, it was, I messed up. And really do apologize for that. And there has not been siding put on the outside. So, you know, I think for inspection wise, I mean, obviously, I leave that up to Aaron to let him know what I want to do. But there's been no work done once ever since the stop order, not even painting inside, nothing at all. And, yeah, so after the ridge beam put up, I needed the water protection. I'm sorry, I sort of left that part out because we were, I was really afraid we had one rain and there was some water coming in when I just had the ridge beam up. And I really wanted to, and there was a leak in the solarium. And I really wanted to protect the downstairs solarium that I had redone and obviously spent money on redoing. And it was, you know, sort of my fear that it would get waterlogged right after I'd finished doing it. Again, I did the wrong order. Is there anything else I can answer?
Does anyone have any other questions for the applicant? I don't see any or hear any. So I will say thank you and open it up to other members of public who might want to comment on this.
Don't see any hands raised at this time.
Yeah, I don't see any. Okay, then I will close the public hearing and bring it back to commissioners. And we can go in reverse order this time. So Jeffrey, it sounds like we'll start with you.
All right, let me, okay. So, so I actually listened to the last So, so I actually listened to the last meeting of the planning commission. Neil sent me the, the records of the actual meeting, so I watched the whole discussion. And the only thing that I noticed, or I agreed with, I think it was either Brock, was from an architectural design standpoint, I think the massing of the structure, it's not what I would call the most aesthetically pleasing, you know, it's kind of a pillbox kind of design as it stands now. And from a roofline standpoint, I think, I personally think it would be more interesting if they either kept either the shed roof on that side, or they just did another lower gabled roof on that side. Because as it stands now, it's not that aesthetically appealing, but the owner does say that it's really hidden by trees, so it really doesn't make that big a difference, and I think that's a small point. You know, she messed up from a permit standpoint, but she has a fairly good explanation as to why she did that. So that, that was really my only concern, was from that design standpoint, I mean, I think it could have been more interesting, and that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Daniel?
Thank you. Yeah, I, I think I pretty much agree with, with Jeff, that, you know, I was a little bit, you're concerned about the massing. I, I didn't want to, I didn't want to make short shrift of the objections of the neighbor 657 with regard to the, the privacy, and, and Lisa appears to have cleared that up. And I did have some concern about the, you know, some of the massing, but I think that that is, that's offset by, you know, two things. One, as Jeff mentioned, there is vegetation alongside of the house, which is substantial, which will, you know, distract from, you know, from the impression of massing. And the other thing is that, as Lisa did in fact point out, the, from the front of the house, that it simply is not an issue. So I think that I'm leaning to, to make the findings.
Thank you. I think we're up to Brock.
So I guess I had hoped something different would come back than what we looked at last time. I think there's a, there's a huge number of opportunities, design sense, to make the house better, including the floor plan. However, having said that, you know, it's probably okay. I think there's enough distance between other houses, and there's certainly enough And being in the architecture field, you just, you kind of look at things and hope, hope this was an opportunity, but there it is, so I can probably support it the way it is.
Thank you. I think I'm last, so. Well, I guess I would agree. Well, I don't think it's like the most handsome thing in the world. I think it's fine, and I understand functionally why it is, it's basically an extension of what, what else is there on the house. So I think that, that was basically the idea. My biggest concerns really were about the submitting and, and the concerns with the And if we feel that both of those have been addressed, I suppose I could support this. So does anyone want to make a motion?
Yeah, I, I knew you were going to ask that.
Yes. Good job.
I'll move to support Divine Design Review 20-13 for 28, you have Lisa.
The second. That was Jeff who seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I think that was everyone. Anyone opposed? Okay, so for the record, that was the four voting members. Natasha accused herself, so the four others voted in favor of the people. And I will say for the public, there is a pending appeal period to City Council, if you choose to do that. Okay. Last public hearing item is Design Review 20-17 for 262 Harvard Drive.
Yes, that's going to be me again. I'm, I'm trying to bring Natasha back right now. I asked her, requested her to unmute herself and, sure, oh.
Aye, come back.
Great, okay. Are we ready?
Yes.
Okay. So the applicant is proposing the following permits to allow a new ground story and new second story additions and interior remodeling to an existing single-family dwelling. The subject property is an 8,250 square foot flat lot located on the north side of Harvard Drive, near the intersection of Yale Avenue in the Hillview neighborhood. The property is currently developed with a 2,324 square foot single-family residence containing three bedrooms and two bathrooms. Existing floor area ratio is 28%, where up to 40% floor area ratio is permitted in the R1 district. The residence is currently supported by four onsite parking spaces, two in the garage and two in the driveway as required by code. The applicants are proposing both ground story and second floor additions and interior remodeling of an existing single-family dwelling. Ground floor expansion would accommodate an attached accessory dwelling unit, and the second floor would provide a master bedroom suite. The proposed second story would increase the height of the existing home from 17 feet 6 inches to 25 feet and 10 inches, where 30 feet is the maximum height permitted by code. As proposed, the project will increase the floor area of the property from 2,324 square feet to 3,163 square feet, and increases the floor area ratio from 28% to 38%, where 40% is permitted by code. The commission should note that the square footage of the accessory dwelling unit, which is proposed at 415 square feet, is exempt from inclusion in the total floor area per Larkspur Municipal Code 18.23.060E4. The existing lot coverage is proposed to increase from 2,756 square feet and 33% to 3,134 square feet and 38%, where 40% is the maximum permitted by code. Additionally, the proposed improvements will maintain the existing code-compliant onsite parking, as I mentioned. As proposed, the new additions will comply with the minimum required six-foot sideyard setbacks and will decrease the rear setback from 54 feet to 42 feet, where 15 feet is permitted by code. The front setback would remain unchanged at 15 feet. The commission should note that a 15-foot setback is permitted due to a front yard setback variance approved for the Hillview Garden subdivision per City Council Resolution Number 580, June 20, 1955. Generally, staff finds the proposed home is compatible with the prevailing scale, character, and pattern of development of the neighborhood. The subject site and surrounding properties are placed in a side-by-side configuration with primary windows and views toward their street and rear yards. The applicants have attempted to reduce possible impacts to the immediately adjacent neighbors at 274 Harvard Drive and 250 Harvard Drive by placing primary windows toward the rear and front yards. The proposed project does include three new second-story windows that face west toward 274 Harvard Drive, as seen on Sheets EC3 and A4. The new windows do not pose an unreasonable or significant impact to privacy as the second floor is stepped in and the adjacent, stepped in, and the adjacent residents do not maintain primary windows on their side elevation that would be impacted. In addition, the placement of the proposed second floor addition toward the front of the home will minimize views of adjacent rear yards. The proposed design does not include any new second-story windows on the eastern-facing elevation, with the exception of new grounds, ground floor entry door and window for the proposed ADU, as seen on Sheets EC3 and A4. However, the views toward the adjacent residents are limited by the low ground story height. As proposed, the orientation and scale of the second floor will minimize the perception of excessive bulk by placing the massing somewhat forward toward the front of the home, stepping in at the sides and using a gabled roof design which slopes back and away from the street. Further, the massing of the roofline is broken up by the gable-ended dormer projections and use of staggered wall plans. All these features will combine together to minimize rather than accentuate the prominence of the structure. So as presented in the plans, the proposed design, architectural style and composition is appealing and combined together in an attractive and visually cohesive manner with other residences in the surrounding neighborhood. The project proposes to replace the entire existing exterior of the home with white artisan wood siding, new Class A asphalt shingles, and new black fiberglass windows. The over-the-halt design and the additions, of the additions appear to be in character with homes in the surrounding neighborhood, which contain a mix of shingled and horizontal wood-sited houses, as depicted on Sheet A5 of the proposed plans. And that's it for this staff report.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah. Hi, Aaron. I was wondering if, if, I know we all got the late mail from the, from the residents on the corner of Yale and Harvard.
Right.
And I did go by there this afternoon. Do you have any sense as to whether, given the, given the angle of vision that would exist between the second floor of this home and the yard at number two Yale? What's the impact on privacy actually is, actually is that yard, with that yard actually, it's so much for me to tell, sort of climbing onto the roof, whether, whether activity in the yard would in fact be, be clearly visible from that second story or not?
Sure, so I'll, I'll, I'll put up the, the letter that we received. So this is, is this the yard you're referring to, to Yale?
Yeah, number two Yale, yeah.
So it is across, across Harvard, and it's roughly 70 feet, 60 to 70 feet away. So that's what I took into consideration. If, you know, if the placement of the second floor addition was put sort of to the rear, then it would impact, you know, the side neighbors, rear yards, which is much closer in my, in my opinion. But I'll let the architect speak to, you know, this, this design decisions. But as I mentioned, the addition is roughly 60, 70 square feet away across the street.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Aaron? Okay. Would the applicant like to present?
Okay. Yeah. All right. Stuart, you should.
I think I'm on. Yes?
Yes.
No video, just, just audio?
If you, I can add video.
Either way, it's, I don't mind.
All right, Stuart, you should be able to unmute and, oh, there you are.
I think you just made me the host, actually.
There we go.
Well, either way, I can discuss the project. Hey, everybody, Stuart Summers, architect for the condo family 262 Harvard. They recently purchased the home, they have three kids, so their dream was to, when they bought this house, was to, you know, turn it into their, their home for their family. So we started, I mean, to back up a little bit, first of all, thank you for hearing us tonight, and I do understand the position you guys are in, because I, I am the chair of San Rafael Design Review Board, and I've been on that board for a dozen years, so I can certainly appreciate the position you guys are in and trying to strike a balance with all these projects. With that in mind, I always challenge ourselves and myself and our office to not only kind of drill down on what the rules say, you know, height limits, setbacks, floor area ratios and all that, but I do like to actually stress what I think the intent of those rules are, to kind of craft the best projects we can and meet the intent, rather than carve, carve a project into the rules. I think we've all seen projects that meet the rules, but they're bad projects. So we do, whenever I do an upper-level addition like this, we really strive to use the techniques you see in front of you there. We like to step the elevations back, so there's no tall walls looming over neighbors. We really do try to respect the privacy of the immediate neighbors to the fullest extent possible, and use a lot of mass-reducing techniques just to make it a pleasant-looking structure. So it's just lessons learned over the years, and I'm sure the architects on your board have used the same. I know I've seen a lot of Brock's work, and I've admired some of these same techniques in the area there as well. So that's what our, what we strove for in designing this upper level. So it's a little surprise to hear that we might have, and I'm certainly, I'm looking forward to hearing from the neighbor across the street tonight, that we might have a privacy issue across the street. So when Aaron let me know that, I, I, you know, I looked it up, and, you know, my feeling kind of stepping back from it is, you know, we're, our upper-level addition is 70 feet away from that property line over there, and then the house has stepped back even further. So I do feel like there's a, these rules and intent is generally for, like, if you're looking side to side or looming right into someone's yard, when we start to get to 75, 80 feet away, you know, I'm starting to wonder if there's other mitigation measures, such as some landscaping or things that might soften what we're doing. But, you know, let's discuss that and listen to what they have to say. Other than that, you know, we really feel like for an upper-level type of addition, you know, and reading the intent of your rules, that this is, we've been successful. You know, when I see one come like through this in San Rafael, it's like I come, I kind of say to myself when I'm at the DIAS that, you know, well, that's sort of the poster child on how you do an upper-level addition. I think this meets the needs of my applicant, our client. So this is a little bit of an awkward way to have a meeting with these Zoom things, so I'll leave it at that, but if you have any specific questions for me, I'm more than happy to chime in.
Want to have any specific questions?
Well, I, I guess I, I guess I do want to, you know, for the sake of thoroughness, do want to ask, you know, Mr. Summers about, you know, his assessment of the, the angle of view between that upper level and the, and the yard at, at two Yale. So does, does the view actually clear the fence?
You know, I've tried to study, I have a drawing on AutoCAD in front of my screen right now, which you guys can't see, and I drew a 70-foot, I drew the property line across the street, I made an assumption of a, of a six-foot tall fence over there, and understanding that their, their house is a little further back. And I suppose if somebody was like standing right up to a window and craning their neck a little bit to look down, I suppose if that was someone's intention, they could, could do that. But, you know, my experience with how people live, that, you know, I think people generally don't want to look into someone else's yard as much as they don't want someone looking into their rooms. So, you know, I, I know that's challenging with upper-level additions when homes are right on top of each other. I, I feel personally that there's a sufficient buffer, you know, we're not 10 feet away, you know, that I'm, maybe part of the feeling of the house on the other side of this home has a second story addition, that's probably 10 feet away from them. So when we start getting to 70, 80 feet away, I mean, I don't know where we, I mean, I don't know where we start drawing the line of being reasonable.
Okay, thank you.
Is there, does, does the owner want to speak?
Yeah, the owner's on the line here. John, should be able to unmute yourself.
Yeah, hey, John Condo here. Thank you, everyone, for joining, or not being able to join tonight, you know. I'm here, yeah, my family and I bought the home, you know, with, with the hopes of, you know, creating a perfect home for our family of three kids, currently three bedrooms, and, and we were just looking to add a master suite for my wife and I, and to give the kids their own little section down below, which is present now. And we hired Stuart, and he did a fabulous job, I think, with the plans, and I'm just really excited about this opportunity.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public like to speak on this?
Yes, we have Lisa from the public. Oh, we have two people who have their hands raised. I'll let Lisa speak first.
So I didn't have an audio check. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes. Can you, for the record, state your name and where you live?
Happy to do so, yes. My name is Lisa Lane. I'm the property owner at 14 Yale. So I am one house down from the corner, opposite the condos, new home. So I am one house down from the corner, opposite the condos, new home. And we have a second story and my office and bedroom are upstairs. And there's a very clear line of sight from the proposed addition into my landing and my office. And I'm not sure about my yard. I, for sure, it's gonna, they're gonna be able to see into Dean and Sandra's yard. You'll hear from them in a moment, I'm sure. You know, it's, it's really tough to be on this call tonight because, you know, I moved here 20 years ago and we had a dream and we had only one little boy, but it's the same idea. But the thing is, in those times, the standard was it absolutely cannot afford the possibility of seeing someone else's yard. That's just not okay. So when you start to get into, the next door neighbors are important, but the view, the view from the condo's home is towards Mount Tam and that is in the direction of the Griffin's home, my, and my home. And of course they want to maximize that view. I mean, it's lovely. But they have another direction to go as well. They have the creek. And it's, that's also beautiful. So, I mean, there's choices to be made. I, it's just really tough is what it is, but I think that the standard needs to be that no one's privacy is compromised. The next door neighbors are the least of it because the view is out the front and the back. Now, also, I have another concern here. I have two other concerns that I want to raise. Number one is this neighborhood has been through hell and back for the last four years and we're not even done. We've had the hospital under construction for, I think it's three years. The bridge, only a year and a half. It seems like in a lifetime. There are trucks, noise, all the time, all the time, all the time, all the time. And honestly, with shelter in place, you know, I used to be the only one that was home all day. I, A, I work at home and I have a 91 year old husband who is disabled and I'm, I'm here all the time with him. So I hear everything and I see it all. And we just repaved the streets at great expense to many of the residents. We had to replace the lateral sewer lines. And so now we're going to have a project which is going to bring multiple trucks in. They're already coming. They've, they're already surfacing the pool. They're already here in the neighborhood. And, you know, it's, it's like, I feel like we need to protect the investment that we've all made in our streets. And I feel like in terms of public health, I don't want, I don't want a bunch of people in the neighborhood working right now. It's a really high risk. And last but not least, in terms of the neighborhood's health and my own health, the noise that a remodel of this scope provides, it's the wrong word, it brings would be better. You know, it's big and I've been through it many, many times over the 20 years I've lived here. I just feel like right now is not the time for it. And I would encourage the condos to just, you know, could we just give this a year? Could we just all get through shelter and all the fear and, and all the noise of the constant projects in our area? It just never ends. Anyway, that's me. Dean and Sandra have a much more pertinent issue, which is their privacy in their backyard.
Thank you. Again, for the record, could you, I'm assuming Dean is up now. Could you state your name and where you live?
Yeah. My name's Dean Griffin. We live at two Yale Avenue, which is the corner property on Yale that sits on the intersection with Harvard Drive. So 262 Harvard faces directly onto the side of that property. And I, I mean, I'll start by saying, I think the, the proposed extension, it looks beautiful and it clearly protects the privacy of the adjacent properties. But putting the two bedrooms and the six windows on the front of the property, it, it faces directly into the side of our, our house. So it, it sees along all of the side and all of the back of our, of our yard. And I don't know if it's 60 foot or 70 foot, but, but I know because the story poles are up that if I stand in the middle of my backyard, you know, I, I can see directly into where the, the two additional second story bedrooms will be. So I'm, you know, I'm absolutely sure that they'll be able to see into our backyard as well. You know, I, I preference, I, I totally understand the applicant's desire to, you know, build a family home here. You know, and we're supportive of that. But, you know, I would ask the architect to take a look at what you can do to mitigate the, the impact on our privacy. I mean, our preference would obviously be for you to face the bedrooms back towards the creek. If not, I guess we would ask what you could do to mitigate the, the, you know, the unrestricted views across the back of our yard. And as a minimum, if that isn't possible, if we can't, you know, agree a compromise on the design, you know, we would be looking for something to try and shield us from, from those views. You know, as a minimum, some, you know, some kind of landscaping that would mean that, you know, it wasn't possible to, to, you know, peer into our backyard.
Thank you. One else who'd like to speak on this issue? Was there a question?
Sorry, I just had one more thing to, to add. I, I mean, there's, it seems like there's some question around with the distance, you know, how invasive it would be. You know, if, and, you know, I'm not encouraging anyone to come and climb on my roof, but if people want to come and stand in my backyard and look at the, you know, the, the impact of the proposed second story addition, you know, you're welcome to come and look. You know, I, if I'm lying down in my backyard, I don't think you'd be able to see it. But I think, you know, if you were to come stand in our yard, you know, you would see that, you know, whether it's 60, 70 foot away or not, that, you know, it is, it, it is taking away our privacy across the back.
Thank you.
It looks like Lisa has her hand raised again.
Okay.
Hi, yes, I do. Thank you. The thing that is interesting about our particular block, if, you know, if you picture a typical subdivision, you have a house and then it has a backyard. And it faces, well, it rears onto, the, the rear of the yard faces the other person's yard and then the house is further away. So our houses are different. Dean's house, Dean and Sandra's house and, and my house, we butt up against the side yard of a home on Harvard. Now, why is that relevant? I'm not even sure it is, to be honest, but the, the angles, there, it's just not a normal neighborhood, the, the way that our properties are positioned. And what you want, the thing is, the, the question is not can, what does someone have to do to see into Dean's backyard or my backyard for that matter? The question is, do I have to worry about it? And I can hear, you know, we haven't really talked that much about it. Everyone's so busy. But I, I, I know their situation. I know that the shrubbery that I have impacts their view of Mount Tam and I try and keep that moderate. For them to be exposed this way, I, I know how it feels. You know, I had to redo my whole hedge and for two years I was exposed to that side of the house. And, you know, it's just not a comfortable feeling to own a home in this neighborhood. We have a nice neighborhood. And to have to worry that someone can see into your home. You know, it really is an issue of privacy. And I think privacy is an assumed privilege when you buy a house in this neighborhood. And, well, anyway, and I, and I agree, and I didn't really vocalize this before. It's, it looks like a beautiful addition. It really does. But I think you have to take into consideration the across the street neighbors, almost more so than the next door neighbors. It's a tricky situation and I think it, it needs to go through another cycle or two. And I think that's, I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Don't, don't see any other hands raised.
We will bring it back to the floor.
Can I ask a question of Stuart?
Yes.
Yes, please.
This is Brock.
Hey, Brock.
Just out of curiosity, why wasn't the master bedroom aimed out toward the, the canal or the other, the other direction? Just, I'm just curious. I'm not trying to design your house for you.
Oh, no. Very, very simple answer. We'd rather look at Mount Tam than Marine General Hospital.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's, it's pretty simple. You know, there are some views there that they would like to enjoy. We wanted to take advantage of those. And it just set up better. The master on one hand, I, I can, you know, there may have been a way to propose that. The other side, not so much because we have this living room down below where we're trying to get some volume out of the ceiling. So we can't start putting rooms on top of that area. We're going to lose that, that architectural effect we were going for to open that more common space up.
No, I was thinking of the master bedroom, not, not the small bedroom.
Yeah, primarily so we could catch some of that Mount Tam view. So, and then if I might, I could just respond, you know, I mean, I'm sure you guys know what my opinions are. But I could respond to some of the comments that we heard tonight, if, if I may.
Okay, briefly, please.
Yeah, just, you know, with respect to the privacy, you know, I mean, I very respectfully disagree that, that trying to, not that it's not important, but to, it's to, to state that, you know, an across the street, 60, 70, 80 feet away view or respect of privacy, while it is important, is, might supersede looking sideways into someone's backyard. I just, as being an architect and someone that's been looking at codes and what you guys do for all these years, I, I just don't personally agree with that statement. And it's hard, you know, it's hard to hear, you know, while I've got my upper level, but we don't want you to have it. So, I mean, that's, that's difficult to hear as well. But, you know, we crafted it best we can, kept it way under the height limit. We thought we respected all that privacy by having no windows looking sideways directly into yards. I don't know if there's a landscaping solution with the neighbor that the, my owners could work out. But that's pretty much it with, with respect to what we think we've done here or attempted to do.
What, one other question. The windows, the, the smaller windows, are they clear? Because there's three six high, so you're gonna be, when you're standing at the toilet, I'm just curious to know. I, I like the looks of them.
Yeah, they could certainly be raised. They can certainly be frosted or, you know, normally in those situations of shower and, and anything like that on a front elevation, where our intention would be to obscure the glass.
Yeah, because it's, it's going to be fairly down on the shower too.
Yeah, you know, we do have some roof protecting us, you know, because the building is stepped back, but, yeah, certainly obscured.
Okay, thanks.
I had a quick clarifying question. This is Natasha. I think the Griffins live at two Yale Avenue, directly opposite. The other neighbor, Lisa Lane, which, so which address was she at?
I believe she was directly next to them. She's at 14 Yale. So I think she was.
On the other side of the.
That's correct. That's correct.
Thank you.
And then we, we do have John Kondo, the owner, has his hand raised again and then Lisa has her hand raised again. Do.
So I, okay. Go ahead, John.
Hi there. I apologize. Can you see me?
We can hear you.
Okay. I'm the wife, Jacqueline Kondo. I was putting my, my kiddos down. So I apologize for not being here earlier, but I did get to listen in for the last, you know, 20 plus minutes or so. But I just, you know, want to make sure you guys know, we've been in this community a couple of years now. We were at 15 Harvard, looking for our dream house because we love this community. We have so many friends in this community. And our number one goal is to really make sure that our neighbors love us and we never would want to disrupt any of our neighbors. I think that two, it may, it should be noted that 274 Harvard, our direct neighbor, and 250 Harvard are completely supportive of this. And if this were to impact any yard significantly, it would be one of theirs just because the second story looks directly into those yards. I, I love this community. I want to respect everyone. And we will absolutely work with, you know, the neighbors who are feeling impacted by this project. But I think that it's important for you all to know that we are friends with so many of these neighbors within this community. I could go on and on about how many friends we have that support this project because they know our family and they know, you know, we, we want to work with everybody. And we ultimately just want to bring, you know, some value and some, some growth to such a wonderful community. So I just thought you might want to hear, hear that.
Okay, Lisa, you can speak one more time, but let's make it quick.
Lisa, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Okay, I think I got it. Am I unmuted?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, okay, good. Okay, so I just suggest that you guys look at other homes on Harvard that have the creek access and have windows facing into the neighborhood. Because the more I look at the drawings, the more I realize, I think that's a lot of windows. So what has been instinctive for me, I think you will find that other people with a two story addition, it's not like that. And if it is, they're looking at a house whose backyard is behind them. It's all about the placement of the home. We have a unique placement of our corner property and my property as well, and all the way down Yale. We're sideways to this exact home and it, it's tricky. Okay? So that's one thing. Please check out other two stories facing into the neighborhood. I'm pretty sure that these guys, the condos, have way more. Secondly, I appreciate Mrs. Kondo's sentiments. But part of my concern about this project is no one has knocked on my door to say, hey, we're going to be refinishing our pool today and it's going to be noisy like all day long. Just wanted to let you know. That's what we did when we did our remodel. And that's what many neighbors have done, is to just come around and say, hey, we're going to do a big project here. We just wanted to let you know about it. And that has been missing and honestly, it is part of my concern. That is all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Okay, I think everyone has had the opportunity to speak at least once. So I will close the public hearing at this point and bring it back to the commission. And I'm going to start with Daniel.
I was afraid of that. Before I, before I read my comments, I just have a, this parliamentary question for, you know, for Aaron Verneil. With regard to the, the actual process, because I know there's been, that Lisa did bring up the, you know, the amount of construction that's been going on in the neighborhood and is, you know, requesting that the, that the project be deferred. What, what I'd like to know is, is that actually within the purview of the planning commission to, to address the actual timing of construction? I was under the impression it was not.
This is Neil, top planning, building director. And the purview of the commission is really the design review, application and the findings that are applicable. And there are conditions of approval that can be applicable, which lean themselves towards the codes and the regulations that we enforce. And there are time limits on construction, which are included in those conditions. And there are time limits on construction, which are included in those conditions. And in some cases, in hillside areas, there might be seasonal conditions for grading projects, but the city does not apply any kind of moratorium or limit on construction at this point. That would be required action of the council to do that. So that's technically not within your purview for this type of application.
Okay, thanks, that was my impression, I just wanted to clarify that for myself and for my, and for my colleagues, so thanks Neil. Okay, so, you know, this, this is a little bit of a tough one, but I guess that's why they pay us the big bucks. So far be it for me to discount in any way, privacy concerns in, in a neighborhood. So I think I'm approaching this with quite a bit of caution. And having said that, with regard, we were asked to appoint about, on the design review and I think the, the, the design really does comply very, very well with, with prerogatives of the, of the city with regard to the various design elements, how interesting the property looks, how its impact off the streetscape, the avoidance of massing, and we can go on and on and on. In addition, in addition to that, I think it should be, it's noteworthy that the project does include an auxiliary unit, which is to, to the benefit of the city and to the, and to the community as we try to expand the availability of housing. So that's, that's really to, to the benefit of the project. So when I, when I look at this, when I look at the, at the program, when I look at the various components of the privacy concern, should be, you know, the, the angle of view, the distance, whether or not there's a possibility of other forms of mitigation, I kind of coming down on the side of making the findings of approval for, for the project, because it is as appealing as it, as it actually, as it actually is. Now, if there's some accommodation that could be made between the condos and the neighbors with regard to vegetation, which would further shield their properties from any invasion of privacy, then I would, you know, obviously encourage them to go ahead and do that and explore that. But having said that, and with all of the, you know, the caution that I think I'm putting into, you know, into looking at this, into looking at all of the concerns that have been expressed, but even given that, I'm leaning in favor of the project.
Thank you. Let's go with Natasha.
Yes, thank you. I should agree with a lot of what Daniel just said. I, I think that the design is very, very appealing and it's actually a beautiful design. And with my knowledge of that neighborhood, I think it is compatible with the character of a lot of the properties there. So I do, I do love that part of it. I did hear the, the neighbors' issues and concerns with regards to the construction noise. I'm sure it is frustrating, especially as we are all home right now, to hear further construction noise. And also on the view, so if that, if there is something that can be done on the landscaping side, I believe, I think Mr. Griffin had, had suggested that that might be a solution and perhaps the, the owners and the architect could maybe look at that more closely and see if there's something that could be put in place that can give them the protection they need. But in, so I would encourage that and I would, it would be very good if that could happen. But I think in general though, I'm very much in favor of this.
Thank you. How about Brock?
You're on mute, Brock. You're muted. There you go.
There you go. Sorry, I disappeared, I only have six people showing, so I was out of the picture. I like this project, I think it's a handsome design and I think they've, they've done a good job in general of paying attention to the neighbors as best they could. I would encourage them to get together with the people across the street and talk about screening, because I think that's always a good neighborly thing to do. The other thing I think we should keep in mind is that, that it's a bedroom that is sort of the offending view and, and people spend the evenings in the bedroom and they generally close their blinds because you don't want the other people looking in to your bedroom either. So I, I can definitely support this project.
Thank you. Jeffrey?
I would agree with everything everybody said, I think it's a very good, very handsome design. I like the fact that it's set back from the roof line on the front. I think it is definitely, does not look overly massive, I think it's in scale and in proportion and just really well done. And I think that probably the solution seems to me to encourage them to put, the Griffins to put one or two trees there in that corner of the yard, which would, you know, grow and shield the backyard from that situation. So I'm in favor of this design and I think they've done a very good job presenting it.
Thank you. And I actually would agree with pretty much everything that everybody else has said. I, I think it's very nice of design. I think that they've done a good job thinking about how to set back a second story addition and really live within all the things that we typically look for. And I am sympathetic to loss of privacy, it's always an issue, but I'm also, also sympathetic to the fact that it's across the street and pretty far away. And I too, I guess, would echo, you know, requested the two neighbors to see if they could work on some kind of vegetative solution. I think if you do any kind of second story, there are going to be some windows there, you're not going to want to have blank walls not looking at Mount Tam, so you're going to have windows, even if you oriented, you know, the bedrooms towards the creek, there would still be windows on the side. So I think it's just really, you know, have had you best to dress that. So I can support this project.
Yeah, the other point that I wanted to make was as far as construction noise, et cetera, from Marine General and the bridge, that's going to happen regardless of whether they do it this year or next year. So, I mean, if it were me and I was a neighbor, I'd like, let's get it all done at one time, then, then space it out for a couple of years. So I, I mean, while I appreciate that's a, could be a problem, I think that it's better that they get it done sooner than later for that concern.
It's also not something that we have the power to dictate in the planning commission. So, okay, it's time for a motion.
I would move approval of design review 20-17.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Okay, for the record, that was unanimous approval and there is a 10-day appeal period to the State Council. Thank you. Okay.
Commissioners, just for the, you know, for the record, and I don't know if Lisa is listening, but it is, and I have this discussion with two of the commissioners when we were doing with our new commissioners, Jeff Swisher and Natasha, when we were onboarding, but certainly one of the, the design review findings do not guarantee that there are no impacts to privacy or views or light or air, but that additions and particularly additions that meet all, all zoning findings, that the impact is not significant and it's not unreasonable. And I just wanted to kind of reinforce that qualification, that qualifier, that there are additions, especially second story additions, do tend to have some level of impact and it's really the judgment of the commission weighing all the evidence and whether that's significant and whether that's unreasonable relative to the site and surrounding conditions. So with that, I'll let you get on with the next item.
Thank you, Daniel. The next item is approval of the June 9 minutes. Not May 26th, as it says in my agenda.
Actually, it has to be one of us. Yes, I'll move to approve the planning commission regular meeting minutes of June 9, 2020.
And I'm. I was going to say, I assume that only three of us can vote on this, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the three commissioners who could approved the minutes.
We'll assume that Commissioner Fisher and Tommers abstained from the vote.
Yes, I'm sorry, to be clear. Okay, the last business item is planning commissioners' reports, if anybody has.
I don't, but Neil, do we have to formally anoint Brock as our vice chair?
Well, actually, I believe that you're in line for vice chair and I was going to bring that up. We meant to put this on the agenda, but I think you're in line for vice chair and Brock would be chair pro tem as a.
I think I was declared chair pro tem in the last thing, but I don't care.
Is that, is that correct? I might be out of order.
Yeah, yeah, we, yeah, I think that.
I think that is right.
I think.
Brock would be vice chair.
Yeah, sounds fine.
So I'll.
It's a little. That would make you chair pro tem if you want to make one sweeping motion.
Sure, why don't we do that?
I'll just say, the good news, Brock, is there's no place to go, so I doubt I'll be missing a lot of meetings anytime soon.
This is the highlight of my two weeks.
There you go. So do we have to move, make a motion on this one?
Sure.
To make Brock the vice chair?
Sure, I can't move to make myself vice chair.
Okay, I move, yes, as I brought it up, I move to make Brock vice chair of this august commission.
And I will second.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Come on Brock, you can say aye too.
Aye.
Okay, I think that was unanimous.
Can we, just in case there's some major conflict or issue, can we also, can somebody elect Daniel as our chair pro tem? As our third, third person?
Daniel be the chair pro tem.
I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, Daniel, you're number.
I'll leave the room if I have to.
You've been elected pro tem. We didn't used to do pro tem.
Well, it actually happens on occasion if somebody's out sick and another person has to recue, the chair has to recuse or something. We can't hold a meeting with three people.
Hey, do we have any other commissioner reports? I'm seeing no, no yeses, okay. Can we, would anybody like to make a move, move to adjourn the meeting? I can say that.
Sure, I'll move to adjourn the meeting.
Second?
I'm good at seconding today, this is good.
It's good warm-up practice, it's like spring training for.